Welcome to City Council Meeting October 28. Let's call the meeting to order. Do roll call, please.
Mayor White.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilmember Ortiz.
Here.
Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Great. Move to item C. This agenda item allows the City Council to excuse the absence of councilmembers not present at the meeting. If all councilmembers are present, this agenda item will be skipped, of course. Do we have any public comments on item C? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion.
I'll move to excuse both councilmember Jones and Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Second.
Then moving in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Call for invocation by Pastor Deanna Salinas.
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for everyone that is here today. Today, we pray for our mayor and our city council that are present. Lord, we thank you for your wisdom and guidance concerning the agenda for today's meeting. Help them to make the right decisions concerning this community. Lord, thank you for the unity and understanding among those that are here today. We thank you for your divine protection in this place. The Bible says in Psalms 91, "Those who live in the shelter of the Most High will find rest in the shadow of the Almighty." So Heavenly Father, today, we also pray for our first responders of this city and nation. Thank you for their courage, their selflessness, and their unwavering dedication to protecting and saving lives. Grant them strength, wisdom, and resilience, and make them feel your comforting presence in moments of stress and fear. Shield them from harm, bless their families, and bring them home safely. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Agenda review.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes. All right. Thank you. Public comments from the audience regarding items not on the agenda. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the council on any items not on closed session, consent calendar, public hearings, and city council business. Under state regulations, no action can be taken on non-agenda items, including issues raised under this agenda item. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing council regarding items not specifically referenced on this agenda. I will open the floor for public comments.
Good evening. My name is Silka Saavedra, and I'm a resident and homeowner of Greenfield for more than 15 years. I currently help coordinate the Saturday market at the gazebo, and in the past, I've also helped produce the Harvest Festival, the Fourth of July celebration, and the Easter and Christmas events in town as well. I'm here voicing the concerns of the 40 vendors that are part of the Saturday market at the gazebo. Most of them are here tonight. It has come to our attention that the city government has an interest in changing the format of our market next season. There are rumors that the current market will be replaced by a certified farmer's market. Now, there's no objection to having a certified farmer's market in Greenfield, but why not have it another day that doesn't interfere with our Saturday market? Or if you want it on Saturday, which I don't recommend, then in a different place perhaps? Or you might consider hosting it during your new food truck night, since that's also new. A certified farmer's market has regulations, and most of these vendors here might not be able to participate in this type of market. To put it bluntly, the word out in the street, the rumor, is that our current vendors will be replaced if this happens, and most likely, their booth space fee will increase significantly as well, just like it has raised the prices of the Harvest Festival and other events in town. Hence, that's why most of our local Saturday market vendors haven't been able to participate in their own city local events. And if you want to transition them to the Sunday flea market in town, most of these vendors already have a gig that day, better and bigger, at the Red Barn, Watsonville, and King City flea markets. Those are established venues where they make good money. Our Saturday market at the gazebo was created with the community in mind. We offer fair prices for the vendors so that they can offer fair prices for our Greenfield residents. We started out with just a few vendors, and now we fill up the entire gazebo. We've done an amazing job creating the market, and we are self-sustained. By this, I mean that we bring our own garbage cans and bags, we pick up and dispose of our own garbage, we clean up the park, we pick up the parking signs as well at the end, and we do much more. So that's why we ask ourselves, why do you want to dismantle a market that is loved by our community and is doing so well? It just doesn't make sense for us. I also want to highlight that most of our vendors are from South County. We're local. Again, our market has community written all over it. I care about our vendors. They have become my family too, and I would hate to see them lose their jobs. Because for most of these vendors, these markets are their main source of income. Please consider hosting a community meeting or a forum before you make any changes to the format of our current market. See what the community wants. The community, and most importantly, the vendors, need an explanation of why you want this change. They are heartbroken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Baron, and I'm one of the body vendors at the gazebo farmer's market on Saturdays. Today, I would like to discuss our concern, our commitment to serving and helping. One concern is that we heard they want to remove all of us on Saturdays, Saturday vendors, which I find unfair for many reasons. Another concern, we have the stress this possible change has caused to another vendors already. Many vendors are fearful that with the new chains, they will not be able to make funds to support for the daily living. Why remove us? Why not hold another, another ban on Fridays? Or if they want to hold, hold on, on Saturdays, why not do it in another location where they hold the farmer's market on Sundays? Our community to Greenfield Committee is to help hunt, to find many items to the, they need without having to drive an hour to Salinas or another city. Best of all, a lot of vendors are aware that we can sell our products at lower prices. My other concern is, is that there are no permits available in the city of Greenfield because there are only 19 permits in the entire city. And already, they are already occupied. I have been in the waiting list for the last, waiting for two years, and the list has not advanced at all in the last year. There are still 27 people in front of me. If we continue like this, I will take at least 10 years or more. So I would like to, I would like to know that we could, I would like to know what we could do to continue selling Saturdays. What do they need from us? We are with all attitude and ability to make whatever changes they needed. If they needed, we appreciate it, the appointment call we make between the vendors or the people who charge who want to make the changes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon to all. My name is Elisa Raya, and I am the owner of Zoe's Picasuit. I am a vendor of the, in the Greenfield Farmer's Market, and I am here to express my concerns after hearing that allegedly there may be changes to the Greenfield Farmer's Market next year. I have been a vendor at the market for about five years now, and it has become not only an important part of my livelihood, but also a place where our community comes together to support one another. The Greenfield Farmer's Market has given many of us the opportunity to make ends meet while sharing our products and hard work with the community. It supports small businesses like me and brings together, brings people together every week in a positive and welcoming environment. I truly believe the Greenfield Farmer's Market is a great asset to our community. I hope the council will consider how valuable it is to both vendors and residents before making any decisions that could affect us, its future. I am asking for the city to be transparent with the current farmer market vendors, for it seems that we have been left out from a decision that will personally affect us all. I am working, I am asking for a sit-down with the city and the vendors to see if we can come up with a solution to this. Thank you for your time and your continued support with this local community.
Thank you for your comments.
Good af, good afternoon. My name is Brenda Garcia Figueroa, and I am the owner of El Fricolito. I am here to express how I personally would be affected if changes are made to the gazebo market and, and what it means to me and how much it has impacted my life. For me, this market isn't just a place to sell coffee. It's where I get to connect with the community, as well as help support my mom and myself. Three years ago, my mom suffered a life-threatening stroke that has left her disabled and unable to work. Caring for her has become my priority, which means I can't work a full-time, but attending the gazebo market helps me make ends meet. Sorry. The gazebo market allows me to be there for my mom while still doing what I love, which is to serve our community and connect with my customers. Every Saturday, I set up my booth surrounded by people who share the same passion, and together, we bring a safe space for the community to gather together. When I think about the possibility of the market changing its format, it's honestly heartbreaking. A few vendors are of older age, and if rates jump from the $25 we get charged to the, to the rates I was given when reaching out, it's going to jump drastically over 300%. It's, it's a lot for us vendors who, you know, we don't make a lot. For years, this market has been more than just a place to sell food, accessories, or household items. It has been a place where people come together every Saturday. You see families laughing, kids playing, and neighbors catching up with one another. It has become a staple for Greenfield and a place that reminds us what community really is. I am so proud to be a part of this market, and I truly hope it will continue to be a place for small businesses, families, and most importantly, our community. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you for your comments.
I am here translating for.
My name is Isabel.
She is a vendor here at the gazebo market, and she has been selling since 2010. We are here today because we have heard changes are wanted to be done. As a vendor, I am very worried. Right now, we are very happy with Silka. She is very respectful and patient. The prices paid to the city are fair. The vendors are afraid that the prices with the new administration will rise, as it has been happening with other city events such as the Harvest Festival, the Fourth of July. Some of those fees were actually paid to the city, and now these funds are not going to the city. These prices with the new set administration have not been transparent or fair. It, it's been said that it would, if it will be remained renamed to a farmer's market, and vendors who don't qualify as farmer's market can move to Sunday's flea market. But those prices are just way too high. These are just some of the many worries. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you for your comments.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Trujillo.
With the utmost respect, we are urging you to preserve the current operational structure of the market. For years, this, this market has been a cornerstone of Greenfield community, founded specifically for, as a nonprofit organization with the express mission of supporting our local students. With, we respectfully request that the market be allowed to continue under its current leadership, specifically Missilca, to ensure that all the funds raised are, remain exclusively within the city to benefit the people of Greenfield. As a citizen who has lived here for over 30 years and a committed member of this market, I hope you will strongly consider our appeal and the market's longstanding dedication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Alan Reese. I'm the owner of T-Visuals, and I'm also co-owner of Borras Conchitas with my mom. Changing the gazebo market on Saturday to a farmer's market would affect the community in Greenfield in a big way. Jobs, commerce, community would lose in a big way because of the location where it is at. It helps us get customers from the high school, also from the church, when there's different events happening. It's not like any other market. I've been selling for about 12 years now. I find it hard. I've always sold out of the city. I've always, we've lived here for about, we're homeowners. Me and my mom moved here when I was really young. I was about 19. I helped my mom get to home here. When we first moved here, we didn't think a whole lot. We didn't think we were gonna be in a big city. We moved from Salinas to here. It was a lot smaller. I'm not gonna lie to you. I didn't like it at first. It was a big change for me, but I learned to love the community, the people. It's close. People say hello to each other, good morning. It's a lot different from a lot of other places. This market has helped me a lot, and a lot of the other vendors make good money. It's a good market. People like it. If you guys change it, a lot of these vendors are gonna leave to other places. We're not gonna be able to be here on Sunday because we all have other markets where they're a lot bigger and we make a lot better sales. And here, we make good sales, and it's an affordable price. I drop all my prices on everything. I saw hats that regularly go for in the mall, $30, $40. I know I can get 25. I know I could get 20. I saw them for 10 because it's a good community. It's good people. These are my neighbors. These are my friends. These are all people I care about, and I hope that you change your mind about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Lilia Salinas. Soy residente de la ciudad de Greenfield desde hace 40 años.
I'm just nervous. Good afternoon. Her name, um, Selina, Lilia Salinas?
La razón que estoy aquí es porque no estoy en acuerdo de que el grupo comunitario, el mercadito, lo creamos desde hace más de 10 años.
Do you have a gun? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm here because I'm not agreeing much with what's going on. We, we made this group, it's been 10 years ago that since we made this group.
El objetivo fue que íbamos a apoyar a nuestra comunidad de Greenfield en eventos.
Our objective was that we were gonna be helping the community of Greenfield in any event that would be happening.
Ya fuera de Navidad, el día de la coneja, el día del pavo.
It could be like on Christmas, on Easter, on Thanksgiving Day.
También contribuimos con donar becas a los estudiantes con el dinero que recabábamos del mercadito comunitario.
We also wanted to give scholarships to students with the money that we would get out of this mercadito.
El mercadito se crió para nuestra comunidad, para que nuestro pueblo tenga una actividad donde se puedan reunir familiares, donde los vendedores puedan tener la oportunidad de vender sus productos.
This mercadito was made for the community, a place for the towns, so they could be united there. A place for where the vendors could be selling their product.
Muchos de estos vendedores mantienen a sus familias, y más ahorita en la situación que estamos viviendo.
A lot of these vendors, they are able to support their families with this, especially with this, the hard times that were going on right now.
También les agradecemos porque por medio de ellos nuestras familias obtienen verduras, frutas, productos que necesitamos para nuestros hogares.
And we want to thank them because with them, we're able to get fruits, vegetables, items that we need at our home.
Por favor, les pido de todo corazón que por favor escuchen la petición. A dónde va el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Este mercadito es también parte de nosotros.
Please, I just want to ask you guys with your heart, you know, pay attention to our petition, because where's our future gonna go with, of this community mercadito? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have anything, we've kind of covered a lot on, on this particular issue. Does anybody have anything additional on this particular subject?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Javier Sanchez. I live in Greenfield. I've been living here for the last 27 years. And I'm, I'm coming just to thank Mr., our supervisor, Chris Lopez, for making, making it happen to have our veterans, to have their banners posted on, on the street. Actually, I brought it up to him like a year ago, but he, he didn't follow up with it. But thank you to him and to all of those involved for this to happen. I'm really glad and thankful that finally our heroes are gonna be recognized in some way. Like my son already has a memorial freeway sign, sign here, one, one before coming, coming from Solidaria, one from King City. So I, I think it's very nice for the city to do this for our heroes, those who are still alive and those who, like my son, is no longer here. And that's all I'm gonna say. Ahora en español, nada más quiero agradecer al señor, supervisor, Chris Lopez, y todas las personas que fueron involucradas para que los banners para los, nuestros héroes del pueblo sean reconocidos y los pongan a los postes de luz de vez en vez. Y de veras estoy muy agradecido por eso porque le sabemos mucho a ellos por todo lo que hicieron sin tocarse el corazón como nuestros policías, bomberos, todos a ellos también, servidores públicos como ellos. Y muchas gracias a todos por haber hecho eso posible. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Martina Ariola. I've been a resident of Greenfield my entire life for the last 29 years, and I have seen this town grow from a small town in the middle of the valley to a big city now. I was here before. We had stoplights in El Camino. I was here before even the gazebo was built. I was here when all those houses down by the high school was nothing but a big old empty block of dirt and weeds. And I will be reading a letter here on behalf of Sonia Montoya, someone that I relate to quite well. She is a substitute teacher, and this is her letter. Dear members of the Greenfield City Council, I am writing as a concerned longtime resident of Greenfield to respectfully urge you to reconsider any plans to discontinue or significantly change Greenfield seasonal gazebo market. As someone who grew up in Greenfield, I know the, I know firsthand the social and economical changes our community faces. I still remember the excitement I felt when the gazebo market was first introduced, and I've been attending regularly ever since. Although I know, although I now live in, in a neighboring town, my family and I continue to visit the market. The market remains a special place that connects me to my hometown and its people. Removing local vendors from the market would harm both the small business community and the residents who depend on them. In the long run, attendance and community engagement would likely decline if familiar vendors were excluded or prices rise due to strict regulations. In addition to being a former resident, I currently serve as a substitute teacher for both local school districts. During the seasons, I often hear students talk about how they look forward to Saturday at the gazebo market with their friends and families. It has clearly become more than just a place to shop. It has become a community tradition to bring people together. I urge the council to listen to the petition and pleas of the townspeople and to renew the gazebo market with its current local vendors. If the city chose to implement organic prices or practice, I respectfully suggest encouraging them rather than making them a requirement by keeping our local vendors involved. We can ensure that the market continues to thrive as an inclusive, welcoming, and affordable space for all Greenfield residents. Thank you for your time and consideration for your continued commitment to supporting our community.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in chambers? I do see one hand raised. Let's go ahead and do that one.
Piantes.
Go ahead, Bea, you're on.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Happy Tuesday. Thursday, October 28, the Greenfield Public Recreation District had a Halloween trunk-or-tree event at the Oak Park. As a resident of Greenfield, I would like to thank the City of Greenfield Recreation Department for the collaboration on this first Halloween trunk-or-tree event at the Oak Park. Thank you, Jesus. Seeing the children and their customs and happy faces was priceless. Thank you, Mayor White and Anne, for attending the event, and if I forget somebody else that is there that I forgot to mention, thank you also. And thank you to all the community that attended. At the last city council meeting, Resolution 202586 was carried out, all in favor. There were still many questions unanswered to the residents. I get, I get the emergency of getting this sorted done as soon as possible. Just don't understand why the last-minute rush. If Mr. Wood was aware of seven years ago, the answer is no, on what I hear. It was not inherited to Mr. Wood. You know, he had seven years to work on it. Do we have state mandate water reserved now? If I can't get the answer, can you email me the response on my email? So I received two identical letters from the city today regarding Proposition 218, which states table two, current proposed variable charges. I see option two, variable rates, 1,000 gallons, and it says currently N slash A, year 26, 27, 28, 29. It goes from 11, 25 to 24, 29. Remember, this is only for 1,000 gallons. My bill was, bill was 10,000 gallons. That would bring it up to 112, 50 plus more than I would have to pay. As far as option one, it's not any better. I will be homelands along with many others, especially singers, you know, field workers, low income, and those that are on a fixed income. Thank you for listening to me, and you guys have a great night.
Thank you for your comments, Bea. Anyone else in chambers? Anyone else in chambers? Okay, then we will move on. Thank you very much, all of you, for attending tonight. We appreciate your feedback. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yep.
Councilwoman comments?
Thank you. I really appreciate everyone is here tonight. Thank you for your voice. This is what it's about. So le quiero agradecer que está su presencia aquí. De eso se trata el concilio. Las voces de ustedes con nosotros. Somos como dice mi playera. We are one city, and I have heard things tonight that I hadn't heard before. He's got a cosa que no he's got a antes. You have opened my mind, and I want to apologize. Me han abierto la mi mente y quiero pedirles disculpa que yo no he hecho mi parte para saber qué es el gazebo. Voy, compro, y de veras no he entendido todo lo que necesitamos hacer para tener el gazebo. You've opened my mind, and I need to apologize that I have not done my part to really understand what the gazebo is. I go, I buy, I eat, and I leave, and I'm happy. And I didn't know everything else. And I don't know if it's appropriate or not, so you can shut my microphone if you need to, but I want to hear more from you, and I want to learn more. And it has to be a Greenfield, the people, gazebo. Not mine, not our city council. It has to be what you want. So if you hadn't shown up today, I would not have known. So le agradezco su presencia porque me han entendido que entiendo que es más de lo que yo sé. So gracias. So thank you. This past week, I went to the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting. And that's where we talk about our trash and what it takes to take care of our city and our valley with the trash. But one of the things that we talked about this time was the youth council for the Salinas Valley Waste Authority. And I learned something new. I tell you, I'm always learning something new. They have a youth council, and one of their youth council members, his name is Julian. And Julian is from Greenfield High School. And we didn't know, I bet you didn't know, we have our very own student representative on the Salinas Valley Waste Authority. Julian wants to have a project here where we can get clothes. He wants to do a project where he can get us to gather clothing, just like you have a farmer's market and a flea market, where we have a day where people who need clothes can come and get clothes for free. So he wants the community to bring clothes, just like you would your goods, and you sell them. We would like, he would like you to bring your clothes that are friendly used, and you hand it over to people who come by your booth, and you give it away for free, instead of throwing it away in the garbage, or even to even Goodwill, which is a good place to go. But perhaps before we throw it away or give it away to another charity somewhere else, maybe we can give the clothes to the people here in Greenfield, just like you wanted to provide for Greenfield. Julian is a high school student who wants to make sure that people have clothes, especially the high school students who are embarrassed to go to school with the clothing that they wear. And perhaps, maybe, perhaps, somebody will decide to have brand-new shoes, brand-new shirts, brand-new jackets that can clothe especially our teenagers whose self-esteem hurts when they're made fun of the clothing that they wear. So I will be working with Julian to make that happen. But isn't that beautiful that one of our own children wants to bring the clothes for other children? That's amazing. And also, the Salinas Valley Waste Authority is in process of hiring, or will be hiring, a new general manager. So the interviews are happening right now. And I got to be part of that first step, and how important it is for all of us to learn. It takes so much to take care of Greenfield. And to think of, there are people that do not live in Greenfield that are taking care of Greenfield, and this is part of them. So I'm very proud of being, not just in Greenfield, but part of the valley that works with each other. And I also want to talk about the Harvest Festival, because I did take my grand nephews. This time I had two of them who did not want to be in a stroller. They are walking and taking everything off the booths, and everything they broke I paid for, so. But my nephews are three and five. And we ate snow cones, banana splits, before we ate lunch. And I have to tell you that I look forward to food truck food. I do. I love your food truck food. But I also appreciate the booths that the kids were able to visit, the toys that they got, the bubble machine, the blowing it in everybody's food in face, but that's part of the fun. I appreciate the music. What a great talent we had. The music was just wonderful. I had to stop myself from dancing because it was embarrassing them. But I also wanted, I was anxious to hear from the community, what did you think of the Harvest Festival this year? It was a little different. It was, location was different, the setup was different. I want to hear more. I haven't heard from anybody, good or bad, so I'm, I want to hear if you like the Harvest Festival and how we can make that better. And then I also wanted to thank Greenfield Me Memorial Clinic. I think that's the name of it. I don't remember the whole name. It has a person's name on there. It was the first time I took my family to see a doctor here in town. And I'm so grateful that Greenfield has a place where there are doctors. I mean, King City had a beautiful hospital when I was growing up here, and then we would have to go all the way over there. Now we can go here. And I got to tell you, my sister has special needs, and they took good care of her. Everything they did, the hospital, I mean, the clinic is clean. They spoke both English and Spanish. They were very courteous. The rooms that we went to visit are satin, were clean. I can't complain. Greenfield has a great clinic, and I really appreciate that. It doesn't look like I live in a tiny little town that nobody cares about. It's a beautiful clinic. And then I want to just throw out an idea regarding the twinkle lights that somebody else in our town likes. She likes twinkle lights in the trees.
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, Stephanie Garcia. So I thought, I had this idea because of the Harvest Festival. Perhaps we have such a huge ECR median, perhaps we could divide it in sections. And perhaps people or families or commercials, I'm hoping more people would adopt a certain section of the middle of the street and decorate it for our holiday. I mean, I see Gonzalez do a beautiful job with their little place. I've seen San Jose Christmas in the park. They did their little thing. And sometimes you just want to drive down there. So can you imagine with me, imagine with me for a minute? You're coming down ECR, you see all these lights, and you start seeing, you know, the Garcia family adopted this section, and they decorated whatever it was. Or this other La Michoacana. Oh, now you got to pay me for saying that. You know, all the merchants, the vendors, you know, if everybody had a little section that decorated it, and people would just drive down and see the beauty of what it could be. So I'm throwing that out there to see if somebody wants to tell our Chamber of Commerce that you'll work with them to do this and get twinkling stars for our Greenfield. And again, I just want to thank you all. Quiero agradecer otra vez. Quiero decirles gracias por estar aquí. Me da mucho gusto escuchar sus voces. Thank you. I really appreciate your voices. And our veterans, thank you for serving. My papa was a World War II veteran, Secundino Garcia. Some of you might know him as Nino. So I'm gonna have his banner put up at Memorial Day in May, maybe, maybe. So thank you, veterans. And I know our council member, Ortiz, is really involved with our veterans too. Thank you for your time.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Is this on? Okay. Good evening. It's really important that you all came out here today to talk about what's happening to you over there. It's been a long time here in Greenfield since we had a lot of community members coming in here to our city and telling us, we can hear things, you know, from different people, but it's better when you come in here and you let us know what's happening. We are paying attention. We do understand what's happening to you. I, some of the stories that you're telling, because you're doing this as a family venture, there's some young people out there that are becoming entrepreneurs, like this young lady right here. We had another one back here, the Navarros, also a young lady wanted more pumpkins than her father did. Now, look, we have a pumpkin patch in Greenfield. That's how things come about, and it's the community that's putting a lot of this together. So I would like to have more conversations about this. I'm gonna echo what Councilmember Garcia said, that you got my attention, and I'd like to hear more. And we will do our part to see how we can make this work. I understand where the city's coming from, but I also hear you too. So there's always compromise, and you could meet halfway in the middle. And I think that's something that we need to figure out, if that's something we're gonna be able to do now. So we've had a lot of events lately in town. We've had the Harvest Festival. We had the Halloween Parade. It's been really busy the last couple of weeks. And so I had relatives in town from Chicago, so I didn't get a chance to get out too much these last couple of weeks. But there's a lot of great things happening. So many people out. It feels like we have a community back again, and I can't tell you how how it makes me feel to be out there and seeing people, meeting people. Other than that, I know there's a lot of you out here today, but we have two presentations that are coming up. So I really hope that you stick around. We have a young gentleman from town who has worked really hard on his boxing, and they're gonna do a presentation for him. And then we have our hometown hero veteran banner. So I think it's really important that you all stick around, because you seem like you all really community-minded people. So this is part of your community too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are correct. It has been really busy. There's, I have a long list here. Today is First Responder Day. Thank you to all the first responders. We appreciate all that you do. Thanks for taking care of us. Really, really appreciate that. I understand there is a meeting this Thursday night at six o'clock at Greenfield High School regarding unification of the high school and the elementary district. So anybody interested in that should definitely check out the meeting on Thursday night. Was happy to attend this year's Harvest Festival and Parade on the eighteenth and nineteenth. Lots of music, dancers, booths, and merchant booths. I want to give special thanks to Celestina Ripley of Flores Farm, who organized the tractors and the farm equipment sections, and Erica Radcliffe and the Greenfield Cadet Corps, who took charge of the parade this year. Also, congratulations to the Two Thousand Twenty-Five Harvest Festival Scholarship winners. A total of six thousand dollars was awarded to twelve winners. Thank you also to the scholarship donors that include Oak Avenue Mini Mart, Chispa Housing, and Tri-City Recycling. Just want to announce that City Manager Wood and I, Chief Mixer, met with Council General of Mexico, Mr. Natalia Said Perez Gonzalez, last Tuesday morning. We met to discuss ways in which we could assist each other when providing services to our residents of our community. Among other things, we offered the use of the Civic Center for any future meetings you might be having in our area. As mentioned earlier, my wife and I attended the Halloween trunk-or-treat event at Oak Park last Friday night. I want to thank Janet Thorpe and Jesús Perez for organizing the event. This is the first time in recent memory that the Greenfield Public Recreation District and the City of Greenfield Recreation District Department have collaborated on an event. It featured a trunk-or-treat and other fun things for the family, including games and food vendors. Also, I wanted to announce, I just found out that the Greenfield Library will be reopening on November the fourth for full service and regular hours. They've been closed now for about six weeks with a new roofing project. So it'd be great to get that back so the community can have access to that. I wanted to announce there's a Veterans' Day Parade coming up on November the eleventh. I believe it's at two o'clock down El Camino. Salinas canceled their Veterans' Day Parade. I understand some of the local veterans here snapped at the chance to host it here in Greenfield. So I encourage you all to please come out and attend that. I think it'll be a large event. Next Tuesday is Election Day. If you haven't already got your vote in, please vote. And finally, I saw an article on KSBW webpage referencing a grant of one and a half to two million dollars received by Greenfield. And seeing as I had not heard anything about it, I started making some phone calls. I got my answer from Chris Lopez Supervisor. Turns out, it's not City of Greenfield, but an organization called Bright Futures, which is affiliated with Hartnell College. The Wallace Group is providing the funds to assist Greenfield and North County students with out-of-school spaces, essentially an after-schools program for middle schoolers to keep them engaged. The grant is awarded for four years. There were only seven grants nationally, and we were one of them. They're looking for existing programs that can be expanded or improved to give middle schoolers opportunities to make better choices. I understand the details on the program are still being worked out, but local grants are available. I highly encourage our staff to look into opportunities for our resident. The contact person is Tonya Mesqua, and I have a phone number if somebody wants to give me a call. I think that's what I have. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Really appreciate getting the feedback and hearing what's going out on the street. So please, don't hesitate to come. If you've got something you need to voice, please come, please come and join us.
Y no se vayan, no se vayan porque tenemos dos presentaciones muy importantes.
We will now move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one action of the city council unless a request for removal for discussion or explanation is received prior to the time council votes on the motion to adopt. Are there any public comments regarding items on the consent count? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. All right, we'll now move to mirrors, presentations, proclamations, communications. Presentation. Tonight, I'm honored to be giving out a certificate of recognition to Randy Savage Villalobos, international PAL boxing champion. I have a certificate here.
Perhaps we can translate that for our people here.
We translate.
Whereas Randy is the true Whereas Randy is the true definition of a student athlete and maintains straight A's, serves on the leadership team, participates in the chess club, and has earned recognition on the principal's honor roll. And whereas Randy has given back to his community by helping and assisting kids of all ages at Avalab Victory Boxing, by supporting younger fighters in training and assisting coaches during bouts, showing his true leadership, humility and heart. And whereas Randy started boxing just three years ago and has fought 29 bouts, he has proudly represented the Salinas Valley and Greenfield while competing locally, statewide and nationally showcasing his skills and his dedication. And whereas Randy captured the Las Vegas Title Tournament in his first year, went on to win the Gene Lewis Tournament in Arizona, and most recently claimed victory at the Oxnard PAL International Championships. Now therefore, the Mayor of the City Council, City of Greenfield, and on behalf of all the community members, does hereby congratulate Randy Savage Villalobos in representing what a champion student athlete truly means, not only in boxing but in life. I wish him great success and happiness in his future. Congratulations.
I've prepared a few words. Sorry, it's a, it's on my phone, it's a little. But I wanna say thank you to the city. I wanna say thank you Mayor White. Thank you to the Council for this honor. And representing the small town of Greenfield, going out. I wanna say thank you to my family, Avalab Victory Boxing, and everyone who believed in us. They call this the heart of the valley. Let's keep helping young people achieve their goals and support their youth the way they should be supported. Even if it takes us one punch at a time. Thank you.
Again, congratulations. All right, we'll have a presentation by hometown, about the hometown heroes' veterans banners.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Aaron Chavez. I'm one of the many volunteers that helped out with the Greenfield's Veterans Banner Program. Tonight, I'd love to give you a presentation of one of the most exciting initiatives to come to Greenfield, California. The Veterans Banner Program is a simple idea with a big heart. We recognize, honor, and appreciate our local veterans by placing tribute banners on our main corridor. We're a small town, but our gratitude is bigger than our city limits. And we want our veterans to feel seen by their friends, families and neighbors every day. Each banner is designed to be dignified and highly visible, measuring 30 inches by 75 inches. For this first round, we have 18 veterans confirmed with seven additional submissions in progress, and we're excited to keep growing from here. Where and when will these banners go up? Our banners will proudly be flown down ECR from Walnut Avenue to Elm Avenue. Banners will be hung from the street median light poles in the most visible locations to make sure that they are recognized. We'll display them twice a year centered around two key dates, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Who qualifies and is there a cost to these veterans? All Greenfield residents who have served in any of the armed forces are eligible to submit an application. This program is entirely funded by generous donations. This means the banners are made and hung at absolutely no cost to the veteran. It's simple. Either submit an application on our Google site with a picture or download a paper application that can be dropped off at the American Legion Post 635. There I have a site address where you can visit our website. And I also made it a little easier with that QR. Go ahead and scan it and it'll take you to our site where you can find all that good information of where to submit your application, how to get in contact with us, and where you can make donations if you'd like to as well. And that concludes this presentation.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Did you want, you've been instrumental in this, so.
So, when I first started on council, there were a lot of talks. The mayor and I were really pushing to have banners placed up on ECR. And so I think, I believe the first ones were the, the kids from the high school. And I was determined that I was gonna get these military banners up because it's very important to me. I come from a family of veterans. I've had uncles who were POWs. I, you know, not everybody came back the way they left. A lot of them, their lives changed. I'm sorry, I get emotional. So it was really important to me to honor them, especially the people from Greenfield. And I have to tell you this, I have met some amazing people. Amazing people. People like the Villarials that have lived here all their life in Greenfield and I never knew them. And just by picking up a picture now, I think I have friends now that I can go over there and sit and chat with them. I have the Commander Marcel Martins who runs the memorial hall, the American Legion Hall. And that's my friend now. I never knew him before and now he's my friend. Mr. Akitas, Bob, he's our planning commissioner, but I never really had a relationship with him other than seeing him sitting up here and now. He's my friend. And that's kind of the story that's gone through town as I've been meeting a lot of people and meeting a lot of veterans. And like I said, it's really important. We'll, we'll have the banners up soon. It's something that's gonna be ongoing. There's not gonna be an end to it, as long as I keep raising funds for it, I'll keep putting banners up. They're double-sided, so there's one person on one side, one person on the other side. So it was, we did that so it could be more cost-effective, so I could get more banners up there. You won't have a problem seeing them because they're very, very big. And you'll be able to see the names out there. I should have them back in about six days. I thought they would have been here sooner, but you know, it's gonna be about another six days before we'll have them and then the city will go ahead and place them. This has all been because of contributions from people and the community. Supervisor Locas was very instrumental in me being able to put these up. So it'd be really nice if you do run into Supervisor Locas that you thank him for doing this for our community. So I was hoping that we'd get to see all the banners, but you know, again, they'll be up shortly, in about six days. And I want to thank you guys all for your service. It's amazing what you guys do and what you're doing for the community, and I hope to keep on working with you guys for a long time.
I think we have some veterans in the audience?
Oh yes.
Please stand.
Any veterans, please stand. Thank you very much. I've got a little, luckily you got a little preview of those banners and they look fantastic. I think it's gonna really grab people's attention. So again, congratulations and thank you very much. All right, we'll move to City Council business. K1, a resolution of the City Council, City of Greenfield, supplementally appropriating $136,168.56 to expense account number 100-111-95680 for the Civic Center flooding reconstruction and $136,168.56 to revenue account 385-47899 for receipt of insurance payment for the project. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A couple of items that are difficult to follow up there. On March 18th, 2025, the city experienced a water leak in the City Hall lobby, which traveled to the Police Department, Council Chambers and Front Office of City Hall. A service agreement was executed with California Premier Restoration to complete the repairs of all flood damage areas on June 26, 2025, and the amount of $56,636.03. Two weeks later, the contractor reached out to staff to inquire whether the project would be prevailing wage. Any work over $1,000 is, in labor, is required to pay prevailing wage. In August 2025, the city received the change order request to include the prevailing wage criteria. Following various, following various reviews and comments, the completed change order documentation was submitted correctly to staff for review and change order execution on September 23rd, 2025. The city's insurance deductible is $25,000. This amount will be paid from the Civic Center Risk Management Allocation Fund, which currently has these funds available. The amount requested for the supplemental appropriation is the amount that will be reimbursed to the city through the city's insurance carrier. So the amount to be supplementally appropriated is $136,000, $136,168.56. And we are also budgeting the same for revenue amount to come in from the insurance. Question?
Thank you very much. I will open this item up for any public comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to Council. Questions, comments? So the total cost of the city is the $25,000 deductible, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
We just need a recommendation to adopt.
That'd be the second?
Second.
They moved to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move to K2, adopt a resolution, City Council, City of Greenfield, supplementally appropriating a total of $840,000 to the Restricted Transportation Agency for Monterey County Revenue Fund and approving associated transfers of funds. Staff report, please.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. In 2021, the city received funding through the competitive grant process from TMC. This funding included $590,000 specifically for the Walnut Avenue pedestrian and bike way improvements, of which construction commenced in this last fiscal year, fiscal year 2425, and will be completed this fiscal year 2526. The entire $590,000 is currently ready to file for reimbursement. In October of 2021, TMC also received grant funding through the California Department of Transportation to develop a Safe Routes to School Plan for Gonzalez, Solidad, Greenfield and King City. City staff worked diligently alongside TMC staff through the next few years to develop the plan. The plan included four priority projects that were immediately eligible for $250,000 in funding through TMC. The final Safe Routes to School Plan was adopted by the City of Greenfield by City Council in January of 2025. $242,500 is currently ready to file for reimbursement. The amount requested for supplemental appropriation will be reimbursed to the city through the reimbursement process through, from TMC. So we've included in the budgetary information, the supplemental appropriation to a restricted TMC revenue fund and all allocated accounts in fiscal years as journal entries below. We've created this as a restricted fund so that these funds can only be used for the specified projects. It's different than the Measure X funds that do come in from TMC, it's a completely separate account. So we're basically supplemental appropriating the projects that would be receiving portions of that $250,000 for the Safe Routes to School program, and then also supplementally appropriating the revenue fund, and the same with the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project.
Okay. All right, do we have any public comments on item K2? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to Council for questions?
No questions.
My only question is the Walnut Avenue pedestrian overcrossing. Where are we at on completing that project? There's a couple of spots that are not quite done.
Yes, we had a portion that the contractor, once they came out on site, was not actually buildable because the slope at the interchange had degraded due to various reasons, walking, digging, things like that. So we actually had to go back to Caltrans, because the majority of the construction was in the Caltrans right of way, to do a scope change to our encroachment permit that had already been issued. And we just received notice about a week and a half ago that it has been permitted, and so it's now with the contractor to do the credits and, and, sorry, distraction. To basically do us a journal sheet of what things will be credited and then how much it will cost to construct the plan as Caltrans has approved. So we are waiting on the contractor to provide those and we'll be reviewing those hopefully next week.
Any, any estimates on when we'll be able to get those finished up, do you think?
Not yet. We have to do the, the money negotiation with the contractor on what the costs will be to make a change and then see if we may need to come back to Council, but there is going to be a large cost savings already that we do know about from not having to relocate a light pole. So that's gonna be a large cost savings, and so we're just waiting on the balancing with the contractor to submit that for review.
Great, yeah. It's just, we'd love to get this, that one finished, that's been on the ground for a while and it's pretty dangerous going across that over.
Yes, it's been, it's been stalled since May of this year.
My other question was the Safe Routes to Schools, the money that we're talking about here, is that projects that we've already completed or this additional project?
So it actually covers a portion of the 12th Street widening and sidewalk improvements, as well as the new crosswalk on Heidi at Elm. And then there is one portion that we have not completed yet, which is school signage. So that's gonna be coming out of the general fund, and that's also in here as a supplemental appropriation of $7,500 to the general fund and a transfer from the restricted account from TMC.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item K2.
Second.
Moved to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. K3, a resolution of the City Council, City of Greenfield, supplementally appropriating $372,326.45 per fiscal year 2024-25 underfunded capital improvement projects. Staff report, please.
Hello again. Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. Upon reconciliation of various capital improvement project funds from fiscal year 2425, it was discovered there were multiple accounts underfunded for this, this last fiscal year. I provided an explanation of the needed funds below. For the citywide generators, very minor funds, it was about 67 cents or 64 cents, I stand corrected. The now north and south entrance signs, it says minor funds, just about $1,800. And firehouse modifications, the funds were not supplementally appropriated from the previous fiscal year of 2324. So there was a disconnect there, so it looked like a large deficiency, but the money was really there. Emergency repairs to the wastewater treatment plant, typically staff budgets about $500. Typically, staff budgets about $500,000 per fiscal year. However, in fiscal year 2425, we had budgeted $300,000 as the entire $500,000 was not used the previous year. But the budget will be at least $500,000 each fiscal year until the new wastewater treatment plant is online. That money will be coming out of ARPA. The GSA-GSP implementation, we had new costs, which were liability insurance, and that was just over $1,000. Same item, GSA-GSP implementation. We now have legal counsel at these meetings, and so that was not budgeted for at the time. And so, it's city attorney fees, about just under $5,400. And then the GSA-GSP implementation, we went $1,500 in excess of the contract with Sea Weeks and $18,000 for Todd Groundwater, which most of that is, of the $18,000 is eligible for reimbursement through existing grant funding. It just has not been reimbursed at this time. Apple Avenue consolidation project, under $40. And the new water well supply at 14th and Cherry. The original budget was for design of the well, but not the purchase of the land because it was taking quite a while to get through that purchase. So, the design has been delayed and the funds that were in the account were used for the purchase of the land, but were not sufficient. And so, we need to supplement that with $70,000. And that's going to be out of the Water Impact Fund.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on item K3? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council?
Excuse me, I just got to change. The item that you had read from the agenda was 372,000. I think the original agenda has it at 396,000 and change. Just verify and make sure that whatever motion...
Correct enough, yeah.
It's the correct amount. Do you know if it's the 372 or 396?
It should be 396.
Okay.
Want to run those numbers really quick there, Paul?
No, I think we just need to verify that whatever motion you make is the correct motion.
Okay.
And it should be the 3...
396.
Here.
Yeah, if you move to adopt...
396, correct.
If you move to adopt the resolution, the correct amount is in...
Correct amount's on the resolution, but not on the agenda?
Right.
It's okay.
396.
Okay. I do have just a couple of questions. So, most of this is either coming from enterprise funds or ARPA money. The only thing coming from the general fund is the small amount for the generators and the signs. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Right. Thank you. Any questions from council? I'll entertain a motion for the correct amount.
For the correct amount.
For the correct amount, I'm motioned.
We're taking turns here, sorry guys. I move to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Then moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go brief reports on conferences, seminars, and meetings attended by Mayor and City Council. League of California Cities. I believe Mayor Protem went to the conference, but she's not here. Transportation Agency for Monterey County.
That would be me. I have a lot of notes here, so please bear with me. We had a meeting last week. And so, basically what we're talking about right now, Tammy, is that there's a Tammy office in Salinas. The county offices for the next two, right off the 101. And so, their lease is going to be up in two years, so we're looking to find a new place. We're either going to have one built or find something that's already built and we can renovate it. Also, there's talk of moving it to some property that Tammy owns in Marina, which South County mayors were very vocal about this and telling them that it makes it harder for us that are elected officials from South County to be driving all the way to Monterey. And the meetings are long, you know, sometimes we don't get out of there till 12 o'clock, then to turn around and come back. And I'm going to be honest, I'm always five minutes late, okay, maybe 10. And I think, oh my God, if I have to make it to Marina, I'm probably going to get there way late when it's halfway over. So, that's one of the things. Construction on the 101 right now, they're having meetings. They had meetings this last week. One was, actually tomorrow is a meeting, I'm sorry.
I think that one's sure, right?
Salinas is tomorrow from 3:30 to 6 o'clock at the Salinas Ag Commissioner's Office. That's at 1432 Abbott Street. If you're commuting on the road every day, you should go over there because once they start construction, it's going to add a lot of delays to the travel time. And there's going to be a lot of detours. And they're going to start construction probably in 2029. It'll be done in 2031. And what it is, is that they're making bypasses, one on the north side of Tular and south of Airport Boulevard because of the Amazon and because of the traffic and because of a lot of deadly accidents that are happening. So, a lot of changes are going to happen. So, if you can, you can also watch it. I believe it's going to be on Zoom, but it's really important, especially if you travel on the road. Let me see what else. Yeah, they're currently going through design right now. And so, like I said, if you really need to get out there, if you travel, please attend that meeting.
Think you're planning on frontage roads on both sides, correct?
Frontage roads on both sides, they had to open it up. So, they're still working with the people that own the property. So, they're going to have to go around the little side roads and it's going to be quite a mess for a couple of years.
That's it? All right, thank you. Association of Monterey Bay Area Government, that's me. There was no meeting. It was the same date as a League of Cities event. So, most of our people there are council people and mayors, so we didn't do that meeting. That should be the second week in November for the next meeting. Salinas Valley Solid Waste of the...
I mentioned that we celebrated the youth council from the various students from Salinas, Gonzalez, Solidad, Greenfield, and the different projects that they've got going. And also that we are in process of looking for a new general manager, chief of operations. So, that's that.
Right. Monterey Salinas Transit, I don't believe... I think that's Ariana's, I believe. South Salinas Valley Broadband Authority, I think they've been meeting, right?
No meeting. And I don't think there's one scheduled for a while.
Monterey County Mayor's Association, there was no meeting last month. The next meeting's November 7th in Marina. Salinas Valley Mayor's and Managers Group, that's mine. We met yesterday in Gonzalez. We had a word of welcome from Mayor Rios. Hoping to, they're hoping to get their community center open soon. They're in the final stages of construction on that. They announced the passing of their new housing subdivision by council. It'll be located on the east side of the city. He said they still have many steps to go before construction can start. We talked a great deal about the long-term health of this county housing authority and how any disruption in funding could affect each of our cities. Disruption could be because of government shutdown and also because of any reduction in funding coming out of Washington. We also had a long discussion on utility rates. All the cities in the valley and also Salinas are in various stages of adjusting their rates because of increasing costs for dealing with wastewater. It was pointed out that the Peninsula City rates are already really high. So, we are not the only ones dealing with this wastewater problem. That was bulk of the meeting. Planning Commission?
Next planning commission meeting will be November 4th. And just as a reminder, our next city council meeting will not be on the 11th, it will be on the 18th.
Right? City Attorney Report?
Nothing to report.
City Manager Report?
Nothing to report.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Thank you for sticking around. We appreciate your input. At adjournance, tonight's meeting, thank you.